Why don't we go ahead and get started? Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here with us tonight. Couple of announcements. Dave Snyder wanted me to announce that due to work commitments, he's not going to be here this evening. Lawrence Webb is juggling a couple events. And I believe that we already knew that Ron Pepe was out. And Robin Gardner is also out this evening. So why don't we go ahead and get started? And I'm sure that Mr. Webb is going to be joining us shortly. We've got a pretty full, legit agenda, so let's just plow right into it. The first item that we have is on the watershed plan.
We had a town hall meeting last week, and this is scheduled for council adoption next Monday. Our thought for tonight is to not go through the staff report, but to see if there are any council questions or comments or requests in a discussion about whether this is ready for action next week. Just one note on the staff report. To be responsive to the request from the dais, from Councilmember Snyder, which was to provide information about the projects that are in the CIP, those are added to the staff report as Table 1. And so that's the list of CIP items that are, I believe, going to be approved by the Planning Commission tonight, and then be forwarded to the council for your review and approval at budget time. So we don't have a staff report. We do have two members of our ESC who are here with us tonight, Tim Stevens and the Chair of the ESC, Bill Hellsted. And they do have comments on the watershed plan if the council would like to hear them tonight.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then for other council members who are not here, we can also get them in writing. But it'd be great to have a conversation about them this evening as well. So please join us.
You ready?
No, absolutely.
I agree.
Yeah, thanks for joining us.
Then I have two specific questions we can maybe add to those.
Okay. I have one threshold question as far as the staff report goes. Table 1, those are the same projects that were identified in the plan itself. Is that right?
That is correct. These are identical. They're taken directly from the plan.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, if you have any questions now, then we'll hear from the ESC.
I had two questions. At the town hall meeting, there was a, I think, a misstatement. I just want to make sure that the final number is 3.2 million. There was, I think that we were $500,000 off, but this is the right number.
Yes, and I take full blame for that. I apologize. And so I tried to detail it as clearly as I could in here to make up for my shortcomings last year.
And then the, and the second question is, and this was raised also by some of the citizens, the City Hall campus project is, in fact, two projects. And there was some concern that if there's a Project A and a Project B, would they have a sense of certainty that both projects would be addressed?
That is correct. The City Hall campus project focuses first on properties that we own here that we could reduce and mitigate the floods that go downstream. Once that's accomplished, we would look downstream to see if pipes needed to be changed or otherwise. But we felt like moving downstream first and not addressing where we could mitigate here on City Hall campus would be a mistake, and we would probably overspend accordingly.
Do I have anything else?
I think I'll wait for Bill because he may cover what I was going to cover.
Ira, did you have anything? You good? Bill, I had just one request again. If we can just get the rough estimate, as you guys are working through the numbers, on more of the repairs and maintenance costs, I think that would be helpful. Do you think, and I know that it's extensive, given the videotaping and surveys that were done, is that possible that we're going to have that before Monday?
What I can do is take the data that we have today. We'll run some numbers on it, provide that to you, and we will extrapolate beyond what we have. Now, we only have information on probably 20 percent. So beyond that, it'll be an estimate. But we'll assume it to be representative of what the entire system would look like.
And the reason why I ask is since we're starting to deal with the CIP, I'm just not sure if those are sufficient enough projects and large enough that they would be folded into more capital than anything, and that we start factoring that in. But I think it's something for us to just be mindful of. I'd like to get a sense of what the price tag is for that. And I think that's all I had. And then the other, just kind of general comment on the CIP projects, and Bill, you and I have talked about this before, is just getting a sense of if there's going to be downstream effects on any of these projects where it could make situations worse, that we sort of take them in some order that doesn't, you know, create, fixes a problem in one part of the city, but then, you know, really makes a situation somewhere worse. So if we can just think through those issues and mitigate any issues like that to make them up.
Certainly.
Great. That's all I have.
Yeah, I think rather than reading this thing, I think I'll just go through it briefly, and I'll leave a copy of my written comments with you. Generally speaking, the ESC looked very favorably on the plan. We especially appreciated fitting this into a really complex and very demanding regulatory context that is going to drive a lot of the stuff that we're going to do and cost us evidently a lot of money. Certainly, I was on the Watershed Advisory Committee, and so I watched this plan go together. And I must say, I admired Bill and Jason and the consultants. The amount of work they did was really impressive. I was not able to satisfy the ESC on a couple of points that I'll briefly describe here. And one of them you just touched on. We think it was especially unfortunate that we didn't have firm costing data on either the requirements for maintaining, renovating, or repairing the existing system, nor on the TMTL requirements that will come down on us. And that, of course, raises several questions. One area that concerned us a great deal was the evaluation methodology and processes that would be used to measure whatever it was we were going to do. And in particular, we were worried about how confident we could be when we spend this $3.2 million on these 11 projects. We wanted more confidence than we were able to get out of reading the plan, that that would count toward our ultimate requirements. In other words, if our estimate is $24 million down the road, does this $3 million come off the $24 million? And it wasn't entirely clear from the document itself that that would be the case. The other area that we discussed a fair amount, and we think probably deserves a good deal more attention, is the involvement of our residents in the implementation of this thing. On the one hand, the requirements on us are going to be enormous, and the city's ability to respond in really efficient ways just don't exist. The big kind of catchment areas for percolating, for capturing water and allowing it to percolate rather than run into the stream. We don't have enough space to do that. We think that it was, it's almost inevitable that we need to involve citizens and develop mechanisms for us to first judge plans for a project at the residential area, and also then evaluate that they actually go in and are functioning. Especially, we thought it would be, it would make sense to charge an enterprise fund, if we come up and decide to have an enterprise fund, charge the enterprise fund for monitoring and for administering a residential-level organization, to help residents, for example, gather together and do cooperative projects. And working through the calculations for getting the kind of credit that that sort of thing would, the potential for that kind of credit to count for the city as a whole. Those two areas were areas of concern that we had, and we thought we should bring them to you. Still, the plan does clearly offer a useful context for planning the next steps. And on balance, we think they did a terrific job.
Any questions? Ira, Joanna?
It was not a question, but a comment. I'm glad that Bill touched on this. I think one of the pieces that can't be forgotten in this entire process is citizen engagement, mitigation efforts by citizens. We've talked about impermeable services and that. But there's, I think there is a tremendous amount that's going to turn into, it's going to be real money saved, as opposed to it being just sort of cosmetic. I think there could be, there could be real savings and a real sea change in people's behavior and attitudes as well, if we start to seriously engage citizens in mitigation efforts. So I'm glad you brought that up. I just want to make sure it's not considered just sort of ancillary to the process, but it's critical to the process.
My impression was that it didn't get too much attention in the planning process. I think in large part because the staff is rightly concerned about how the hell are we going to run something like this? We're already, I asked Bill tonight if he had a family via song. There already worked, and the idea of going sort of house to house is intimidating. But on the other hand, it seems almost necessary to do, on the one hand, and we have a lot of citizens that I think would be interested in doing it. Certainly, the ESC would offer to play whatever role we might do in doing something like that.
Ira?
Since the issue of the enterprise fund for this is raised, which I think has a lot of value, would, one way to get citizen participation in the mitigation process would be to have certain fee waivers.
Absolutely.
And so forth. And there's nothing like a little monetary incentive to push people right along.
As it happens, I'm on the Board of Gresham Place Homeowners Association. I'm sure if there were some kind of incentive from the city, as there are incidentally from Arlington County, Arlington County finances some lower-level projects directly. I'm sure that the homeowners association of Gresham Place would and could do a good deal more than we're doing if we had a bit of incentive. My protestations of hugging trees and so forth doesn't seem to be adequate, but with a little bit of help, I think we could, we could do more than we're doing now.
Bill, did you want to respond?
I did. I wanted to respond to both of those points. And in regards to engaging residents, I think this came up during the discussions with the Watershed Advisory Committee. And we did specifically talk, when we were talking about how to fund this and the possibility of an enterprise fund, and if an enterprise fund was funded based on an impervious cover fee, that that would be the easiest way to engage the pockets of folks, to give them that incentive that they might have. And so it definitely rose to that level, but it was beyond the scope of the current discussions. And then on your point about whether or not the $3.2 million would count to our $24 million obligation, and the answer is absolutely yes. And I believe we pulled that out in the executive summary, but maybe we haven't made it clear enough. But absolutely, one of the key criteria was that these projects would meet both a community need and our water quality obligation. And so, yes, they would be included in that.
And I think that's fair, and I'm glad to hear it. But I may have overstated our interest in that particular issue. I still think that the evaluation issue is a bit, it was a bit unclear to us, put it that way. What are we going to measure? How are we going to measure it? And how does that fit into our ultimate requirements?
Yeah, and I think what I also heard is how much of that financially is going to reduce, how much we think we're going to end up having to pay because of the regulations that are coming our way. I think that, I think, am I correct that that's sort of where the question was going?
Yeah, is it a dollar per dollar? I mean, it seems unlikely that the requirements will come down to us in dollar terms. It'll be tons of phosphorus or yards of stream bed or some such. And we come up and we say, look, we've done, translating it from what we've done into terms that are compatible with the statement of the requirements that come down upon us, it's still a bit hazy, certainly in my mind.
The requirements are not yet solidified on the state and the federal level. But what they, what we anticipate is that the first 5 percent of our obligation will have to be met during the first five years. We feel very confident that the $3.2 million worth of these 11 projects go to meeting that first five-year obligation. Without question, we will do low-hanging fruit first in terms of our water quality obligation. We want to move quickly. And so projects, in theory, will get more expensive because they will become more complicated. That said, we and everybody who's trying to meet this obligation beyond the city of Falls Church, Arlington, and the Baywide, will get better at meeting these obligations. So while projects may be getting more expensive because of complexity, they may actually be getting cheaper because of our skill level. It's hard to say at this point where we will be in 12 years. So the exact number, is it a dollar for dollar? I'm unwilling to offer that.
And Bill, I think the other point that was also touched upon by the ESC was the issue of maintenance, I think similar to the issue that I raised. I guess there is the question that I just want to have straight in my mind, that we can go forward with the plan as it currently is designed, and then once that we get the data regarding the maintenance, that we can also put that into a process and evaluation, that, you know, that they sort of can go on somewhat parallel tracks, if you will. Yeah, I just want to make sure that there's nothing that is going to make us have to do a redo of this plan if we go forward with it, and then next comes the maintenance plan. I just want to make sure that they can be put out separately.
Maintenance, there's maintenance that's part of the operating fund, and there's maintenance that's part of the capital program where we're reinvesting in our system. The proposed CIP that's before Planning Commission tonight to be approved includes $10 million over this five-year period. So that would be $3.2 million to address these 11 projects. And then the rest of that money, $6.8 million, give or take, would be available to address our infrastructure reinvestment.
So I think I'm answering my own question here, but the staff is going to work on a plan of how we're going to manage those maintenance projects.
That's exactly right. And that's what this conditions assessment work with the GIS and the video logs is all about.
And I think it's important for the community to know that the watershed management plan wasn't really focused in on those issues. But it's important, given that it's essentially one system.
We agree 100 percent.
So. Okay. Counsel, does that mean anything else, any comments? Are we folks ready to move forward with this for Monday?
Yes.
All right. Do we get any other comments, Wyatt, from, or Bill, from others?
Tim has a slightly different take on these, might be useful.
Tim, happy to hear your thoughts as well.
Mayor Baruch and council members, I'm Tim Stevens, also a member of the ESC. And with your permission, I think I'll refer to my notes on the few comments that I have. The staff have led a process and compiled a plan that appears to be comprehensive and thorough, and they deserve much credit for this. I support the plan's recognition of our need to address methods to reverse the deterioration of our local waterways and the Chesapeake Bay. For too long, our region has ignored the warning signs and not been willing to take the steps to rein in excessive disposing of phosphorus, nitrogen, and sediment into the bay, so-called non-point source pollution. Achieving a clean, healthy Chesapeake Bay is important, not only for aesthetic reasons, but as a local food source, which will become increasingly important as cost of transportation gets more expensive. I would also echo Bill's, Shellsted's caution on two issues. First is the TMDL requirements for our city. And we know that the methods of enforcement are still being derived. Therefore, we should avoid committing to and launching expensive projects prematurely. As you no doubt have observed, the projects proposed are expensive. For example, $10,000 for each tree box filter. I would hope that we can fully utilize our bargaining power as a jurisdiction and perhaps join forces with neighboring jurisdictions who will be engaging in similar planning to achieve economies of scale. And the second is that since the majority of non-point source pollution starts right on our own properties when rain runs off our lots into the street, the best way to seek remediation is to encourage homeowners to become educated and take steps to redirect stormwater to infiltrate on-site. Should the council decide to adopt an enterprise fund and utilize some measure of impervious surface as an allocator, and I remain agnostic on that, I urge the adoption of incentives for individuals to take action on their own properties to reduce stormwater runoff into the streets. Adoption of impervious surface as an allocator without recognizing individual efforts to reduce stormwater runoff would be inequitable and serve as a disincentive for residents to take steps to solve this problem at the source. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Great. Thank you very much. And I think it's a very good point about leveraging our resources with other jurisdictions, because I think everybody's going to be grappling with these issues. So, you know, I think that's a fair point. All right. Why don't we place this on the calendar for Monday, then? And we are on to the next item, which is the Affordable Housing Fund.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
So we'll have Nancy Vincent join us for this discussion, and Don Brost, Chair of the Housing Commission. What I would suggest, Counsel, is for the discussion there, that we break the discussion into two parts. And first, have a discussion of the substance of the program, program and the policy that is being brought before the council. And then have the discussion about timing. Should it be adopted now, or should it be adopted and deferred until adoption of the broader set of housing policies which are under review right now? The Housing Commission has recommended deferral, and so we want to hear from the Housing Commission about the reasons for that. I think my recommendation would be to move forward with it now, but I want to, I haven't had a chance to engage with the Housing Commission directly. And so we want to hear what the Housing Commission's views are on that point of timing. But I think before getting into that point, it'd be useful to hear from Ms. Vincent just on the substance of the program, what the program would do, what its intentions were, and then hear about the comments from the Housing Commission in terms of the substance of the proposal as well. Does that make sense?
If I can just get a clarification, is it the Housing Commission, or is it the Affordable
Housing Fund Committee that's recommending the deferral, or both?
Well, the committee, the committee acted. Now, the Housing Commission just finished its meeting five minutes ago.
Great.
And so we've got a fresh recommendation from the whole commission.
Thanks.
Okay. Before I introduce the Chair of the Housing Commission, I would like to mention that earlier this month, fair housing testing was conducted in 10 apartment complexes in the city. And through this process, pairs of testers posed as renters to determine whether or not they're treated differently based on one of the protected classes. This year, it was race and national origin. And no differences were found as a result of the test. And so I'm happy to present the full report and the results of the test at a future council meeting, if you would like. So moving on to the matter at hand, at the December 12th work session, several council members expressed a desire to see the Affordable Housing Fund put to use in a timely and effective manner. Since there are currently no programs in the city to encourage affordable home ownership or for those households considered to be in the workforce housing range, Housing and Human Services submitted an application for a first-time homebuyers program to the Housing Commission. The guidelines for use of the Affordable Housing Fund require that applications be screened by the Housing Commission, who then convenes an Affordable Housing Fund Committee. The committee reviews the application and makes a recommendation to the Housing Commission. The Housing Commission then makes a recommendation to the council. So following Wyatt's process for tonight, what I'm first going to do is ask Kevin Denton to present information about the first-time homebuyers program, about the application that was submitted to the housing application. And then I will ask Don Brost, who's seated here, who is the Chair of the Housing Commission, to present the recommendation of the committee. Don also served as Chair of the committee, and the reasons why they're recommending that the decision be deferred until after the policy has been revised. So Kevin, would you like to present information about the first-time homebuyers program?
Sure. Good evening. Some time ago, a little over a year ago, we first proposed the Affordable Housing Downpayment and Closing Costs Assistance Program before city council, I think it was October 2010, discussing how was a possible option of using cash in lieu of future affordable dwelling units. And the program is a finance program, really a second mortgage for first-time homebuyers, people who haven't owned a home in the last three years. And from our experience dealing with residents every day and potential residents, there's a underserved or unserved market here in the city of Falls Church, and that's the workforce housing, and comes up to around 120 percent of the area median income. People really in the median income range as far as government employees here with the city, city school employees, public school employees, Kaiser as well. So we designed the program really to assist these individuals in buying their first home in the city of Falls Church. It's the second mortgage program. It's a gap filler program to get you from a person that would normally qualify for a loan, has the appropriate income, the appropriate credit score, to be able to approach some of the more modestly priced homes here in the city of Falls Church. We designed the program and requested of the Housing Commissioner, the Affordable Housing Fund, work, the Affordable Housing Fund Committee, to take a look at the proposal. Really, it's a shared appreciation model, so it is something that is, over time, sustainable. It is something that we know would be able to fill the gap for these individuals that meet our qualifications, but at the same time, would have no hope of buying a home in the city of Falls Church otherwise. There are currently no affordable housing programs to purchase a home here in the city of Falls Church. Many have gone away by the wayside, both down payment and closing costs assistance programs, as well as low-interest mortgage. So we presented this in the hopes that would be approved, and we could provide potentially between four to six households with the ability to purchase their first home here in the city of Falls Church. And really, aside from our normal programs, what it does is it expands the income limits from what is the previous norm of around 80 percent of area median income up to 120. The interest rates are currently, FHA rates have recently been at an all-time low, and the ability to access the funds would mean a lot more now than they would, say, have a year ago if we had access to the funds. So we're requesting the money so that we could seek out individuals, really city workers, whether it be with the government or anyone working in the city for that matter, to assist them in buying these homes. Some of the other important aspects are, while we feel the timing's right with the program, is of course the interest rates, and also a recent, I wouldn't call it a plateau, but a slowdown in the accelerated appreciation of homes here in the city of Falls Church in the recent years. The preferences in the program kind of mirror what our other programs have had in the past. Seniors and persons with disabilities who are already city residents would be given preference. One slight change is, we hope to capture people who already are working in the city but don't necessarily live here. So we're going to, we hope to provide, with your approval, we would hope to provide individuals who are already working here the same preference as someone who is already a city resident as well. And then, of course, individuals that have no relationship with the city would not really be a priority in the program. I guess they could be considered. But at the same time, the real objective is to help those in those first two priority categories.
So first questions, I think, on the substance of the policy and the program, and then we go from there to timing.
Why don't we just go down the road? Ira?
Question, since you're going to be screening, what happens if a disgruntled applicant says that you've been discriminated? What are your likelihoods?
Discriminations on what basis?
Your commission discriminate on race or whatever?
We may-
We made no aspect that was discriminatory in any.
I know you don't.
I know.
Someone, a disgruntled applicant unreasonably makes a, since you're a volunteer committee, who would be responsible if they were to sue saying there was mishandling of the application?
That I don't know, but that's obviously a risk of anything that any commission or the council does. I mean, somebody can be at risk. I'd defer to the council, the city council.
Maybe we can speak to it in the context of how we operate now, because we currently operate lotteries for ADUs, and we have tenant assistance, and we have a smaller first-time homebuyer program, so we could talk about how we handle the potential or mitigate the risk of people seeing.
Disgruntled, whatever, you know, say that you've done anything, but somebody gets lit up and incited. So, how would that be?
I'll take a deeper look into it, but I can just tell you generally, Mr. Kalin, that there are a series of threshold defenses that would be available to this volunteer committee or any committee with respect to things like sovereign immunity. They're engaging in a governmental function on behalf of the city. And in Virginia, the sovereign immunity doctrine is still alive and well. It is only pierced in the event of will-for-a-one-time negligence, which is a very high standard to meet. As the city manager mentioned, on top of that, there are already procedures in place, as I understand it, that are intended to guard against discrimination in the process. But having said that, that's my initial read on it, I can certainly look into this particular process in greater detail and report back to you directly.
I was just curious, I didn't have exposure. Isn't that, I expected anything to happen, reasonable that there be anything legitimate? But as a volunteer group, I didn't know what the responsibility sometimes volunteer organizations that have had, wouldn't accept the delegation of authority because there were legal considerations of having that authority delegated.
Right. And I think I'd be more concerned if I was acting independently, but in this case, I thought I was acting as an agent of the city, which would provide.
Just checking.
Ira, anything else? Joanna?
Yeah, I had a series of, I think, very, very small technical questions that'll help me understand the optimum deployment of these funds, because that's obviously what we're looking at. So, I had a series of questions. You had mentioned possibly being able to aid between four and six households, which struck me as a relatively small number of households. And so I guess one of my questions is, I have three. Does the city of Falls Church have an adequate stock of relatively affordable homes so that these funds could be properly deployed? Because I have heard certainly from other sources that there is no such thing as an affordable house in Falls Church. I certainly know that from personal experience. What would be the average deployment of funds per applicant, per successful applicant? And then what constitutes housing? Is that a condo? Is that a townhouse? Is that single-family home? I guess those were my questions.
Absolutely. The first about the current stock of housing in the city of Falls Church. In this particular proposal, the maximum home purchase price would be $450,000. Although I didn't pull it today, in the recent past, within the last two weeks, there were approximately 19 homes that were in that price range of 450,000 below. I didn't really seek out those just over that threshold that could potentially be talked down in the negotiation of price. I didn't take it that far. But there's plenty of homes that could be purchased in the price range. To skip to your third question about what constitutes a home essentially, we would allow the purchase of a condominium, townhome, or a single-family home, although I don't think there's a co-op stock here in Falls Church. I think that we didn't worry about that one. But as far as housing, what we're talking about are condominiums, townhomes, single-family homes. Because we're working with individuals who have a low to moderate income, single-family homes, although eligible in the program, are far and few between in the price range of 450,000 or less. The same thing with townhomes. The townhomes here in the city of Falls Church are quite large and typically on the new side, so they're typically outside of that price range as well, although not excluded. This would really result more than likely in a condominium purchase program to kind of better paint the picture of what's really going to happen if it's put in place. And then, your second question was about the average, and that's something that's very hard to gauge. So, in the proposal, we gave what we felt was a very conservative number that we could definitely follow through on. In the past, our loan maximum was $20,000. In this program, a maximum loan could be up to $90,000. But the majority of homes that are available are in approximately the 350,000 or less price range. I don't have actual statistics, because there's never been a program like it, to base what people are going to take loans at, but my, I would guess to be between $40,000 to $50,000.
Okay, I won't hold you to that number.
Thank you. So, we were being conservative then, the proposal, making sure that we gave a number that we felt we could follow through. If we did get some of the, of course, higher numbers, of course, if we were to get an actual loan of 78 or 80, that obviously takes away a chunk of the money that we've asked for.
Kevin, we've worked on that similar program in the city and how successful has that kind of assistance program been in the past?
The current Downpayment and Closing Costs Assistance Program, unfortunately, over the last few years, hasn't been very successful in providing loans for anyone. The reason it was so successful in the past is our clients who were purchasing affordable dwelling units often took advantage of that program. Since 2008, there haven't been any ADUs that have been available on the market and no new ones that have been produced that have actually been delivered. So, that program, despite it being a successful program in the past, it's really a second mortgage for an ADU. And the reason is, the $20,000 isn't a large enough gap filler for a second mortgage to get individuals, and in that program, the high income or the maximum income is 80% of the area median income. So, if you take someone at 80% of the area median income, tack on $20,000, they have to have a very substantial amount of assets to bring to the table to actually purchase even a smaller, more modestly priced condo here in Falls Church. So, that program, despite it still being in existence, we've requested no future funding for that program, because the limitations on the second mortgage for that program require that you can't loan money to anyone over 80% of the area median income. So, it's successful when used for ADUs, but at market rate, it's no longer a successful program, unfortunately.
Kevin, as far as just, you had mentioned, we think that the program could benefit six to eight households currently with the amount of the requests of the funding that you put in, which is, you know, I have it somewhere here, is 383, right?
283.
283, I believe.
283.
A minimum of four households.
So, we think that's going to help about four households or so at minimum?
I think, at minimum, yes, I believe so.
Okay. And we think that there are units that it would meet the thresholds where the numbers would work out?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. As I mentioned, primarily condominiums, but yes. For instance, at the spectrum, there's a surplus of units that have never been sold to the public. So, units that have never been purchased are, one of the reasons for that is the FHA loans are very popular right now, especially because of the low interest rate and also because, also because of the low interest rate, and it's typically the loan used by first-time homebuyers, because it requires only a down payment of around 3.5%. Although, approximately in 2008, there was an additional stipulation on FHA loans that in order for it to be in a condominium complex, that at least 70% of the units had to be sold before the FHA would actually back a loan. And I'm not certain that they've reached that point, but they've recently come down on their condominiums for their market rate prices for their most affordable one bedrooms. And in addition to it helping residents purchasing homes, I think it's something that could actually help kind of the economy of the city in the regards that if, obviously, homes were purchased there, they could at some point reach that 70% and sell to clients that are using FHA loans. So, that's kind of one variable in there. But those particular homes you're asking about the stock, they're definitely there, but the traditional lower-income or first-time homebuyer is not going to be able to use an FHA loan there, which means they're going to typically have to come with 20% down payment to the table. We're talking the lowest units at around 310,000, that's over $60,000, and we're just not seeing people in those income ranges coming to the table with $60,000.
And this would help?
Absolutely.
Help that situation, obviously?
Yes.
So, the folks have fell, fall out of that gap, essentially, we'd be covering through this program?
Correct.
And then, if counsel decided to go forward with this, how quickly could we begin to deploy the money? Is there another step or?
I think the next step would be to consult with the city attorney, just to make sure that our current program, the secondary financing documents are in order, can be kind of transferred or might slightly need to be altered to the new guidelines. But it's already in place. The kind of, the application is in place, the secondary financing documentation, the experience to, you know, file the paperwork, to communicate with title companies, to get the documents filed with Arlington County through the title companies, work with realtors, work with lenders, all that's in place. So, as far as turnaround, depending on the scheduling, I think that's the only step is really to consult with the attorney to make sure that our paperwork can be transferred from the one program to the other or have it altered so that it fits this program.
And then, I take it other jurisdictions are doing this?
Yes.
Or maybe the thresholds are slightly different, but?
Yes, absolutely. Arlington County and Fairfax County both have homebuyer programs that are similar to this, that have the shared appreciation model for payback.
And this may be more of a question for perhaps John Foster, as far as sort of risk to the city, as far as the funds in case of a default, et cetera. I mean, can you speak a little bit about, does this mean that the city is somehow becoming a lender or how does it work mechanically?
I would defer to Mr. Denton on the intricacies of the program, but I can tell you that, you know, my understanding is that, no, the project is designed to really limit the city's liability and exposure. And that's one thing that they focus on in putting the program together, is they certainly don't want to expose the city to any sort of liability. But, you know, I'll continue, as Mr. Denton mentioned, to work with them to ensure that this program is going to, you know, meet all the legal requirements before it is brought to counsel for approval.
Why don't we go around one more time? Ira?
It's about the quater question.
Please.
If I read it correctly, the second mortgage is, it's a subordinated loan. So, since these funds are not borrowed, these are funds that we have in cash effectively. The worst case, we just lose the money. That's it. End of story. We have no further liability.
But as long, I mean, there would be a way of collecting if there was a default, I would hope, even in a subordinated situation. We'd just be second in line.
Well, we'd be second in line, and we could take collection action, but as Mr. Kalin mentioned, the reality is that a foreclosure by the first trust holder is going to wipe out all inferior subordinate loans. And so, at that point...
Subordinate loans where you can go after personal assets too.
Right, sure.
Not just the property.
Sure.
So, I guess what I'm getting at is, if the city can kind of take a look at those issues, there's various ways of writing subordination clauses. One could be against the property, could also go after personal. I just want to make sure that we're protecting the city best we can. Ira?
Understandable, though, again, if somebody who's in foreclosure, and you have a second, you have a subordinated loan, you don't want to spend a lot of money squeezing that rock to get something out of it. It's just not cost-effective. We don't, it's monies that will not affect the city's balance sheet, and it's just not something that, you know, I think we want to invest too much energy in recuperation clauses that will be difficult to exercise.
I'm going to leave that up to staff, but my expectation is that we're going to protect the city the best we can with minimal cost. Anything else? Lawrence, Joanna?
Nope, I'm good.
Don, just quick to give a little bit more of an explanation of the work that the Housing Task Force is doing and why you feel that the recommendation is to defer, just to give a look at that context.
Okay. You know, we came before the council in December to get some inputs in terms of where the policy working group was going to be done. You'd asked for, you know, a formalized draft in not too distant future. We are on target to do that draft, and at that point in time, we felt, when we voted on it the other night, that we're only talking about three months. And that was actually raised at the Affordable Housing Funds meeting. Did we think that we were on target? And yes, we do believe we're on target to meet our deadlines for updating the policy. So, that was one of the reasons that we said, gee, you know, do we want to jump this gun right now, not knowing what will come out of that policy working group and what actions council will take upon those recommendations? That it was felt that three months was not a point in time that was going to cause undue hardship to anyone. We've not had this program in place for, in the past, and that the three-month waiting time was not an undue burden on anyone. Also, that, you know, the sustainability of this program, and you can see in the notes, if the minimum of four people were serviced out of the $283,000, that money is not coming back until that property is refinanced, sold, or whatever. So, in the worst-case scenario, we put $283,000 in the pot, it's divided up to four people, and as one of the people on the Affordable Funds Group said, it's like somebody's winning the lottery. You know, if you're 120% of median income and below, you can qualify for the lottery, you get a ticket. If you're 121% of AMI, you don't get a ticket. So, it's kind of like this big fixed window. And we weren't sure if that's what the council wanted to do. They wanted to have this cut off at 120, where the person 121 doesn't qualify. That was one of the things that came up, the lottery, the sustainability. And one of the comments in there was that someone said, you know, if the council likes this program, they're going to, to keep it sustainable and ongoing, we're going to come up with additional funds to keep it going, because there won't be funds until they're recouped, when the property's sold or refinanced. And so, this all went into, you know, what is the policy? What does the council want to do going forward? And the bottom line, and this was not a close vote, it was a six to nothing vote of the Funding Commission's, or council or group, or you want to call it these days, it was a six to nothing. So, everybody there felt that there was no undue burden, and I specifically amended the, asked that the motion be amended without prejudice. If the staff wants to come back with this proposal once council has adjudicated the updates to the policy, we welcome that, but we just thought the timing right now was just premature.
Questions? Ira?
The comment, this issue of the lottery, this actually came up before I was on the council, before I was on the EDA, when the Reed Building was being done, and it was a workforce housing, and that was part of the issue. You create a lot of winners and losers. Once you're talking about subsidized rates, that's the way it goes. It really creates, there's a risk that the people who are a few dollars over the max are going to be really sore or weren't selected because of that. And that's... And that's, that comes with the subsidies. That's, that's one of the side effects of that.
Joanna?
No.
Lawrence? Yeah, I mean, as far as the thresholds, I think we've sort of, as a policy matter, we discussed expanding them. I mean, short of having something that's even higher, or some very difficult to administer program, where it's a sliding scale, which I'm staff, I'm sure staff would say that's could be really tough for us to administer. I think we're going to have these cutoffs. That's, I don't see a way around it. I think we're trying to create the most flexible system that targets and helps the people that really need help. You know, as I've said before, you know, I do view things of needing to be holistic, but council made it pretty clear that this was a small piece of the housing, affordable housing policy that we wanted, was this. I'd be certainly disappointed to hear, you know, that we're going in a different direction three months from now, so I'd want to see this incorporated anyhow. I certainly would be pushing for this program in addition to everything else that the committee is going to come up with. And I do think that there is a downside of waiting more time. I mean, I think we could see interest rates going higher, we could see prices continuing to move upward, which is probably a good thing overall, but not if you're trying to get into the housing market with increases in, with interest rates. They're at historical lows. Who knows whether they're going to be there in three months from now? And we're already seeing, based on assessments, some higher assessments. So three months could actually be a break it, or make it situation for some folks. So I don't want to be looking back three months from now wishing that, hey, we could have really helped, you know, four to six families, but now because we've waited for three months, we can't help anybody. So my view is one, council members, let's, let's get this going, and let's put this money to use. I mean, it's been sitting in the fund for, for a long time now. That's just my view. So I want to get other people's reactions. Lawrence?
Thank you. And I was met with, wasn't able to meet the, with the policy group when they had their initial meeting, but did, I'm part of the task force, which is doing a really good job. I thought they had a great conversation the other night of putting together some different pieces of it that I think when it comes back to council, we'll, I think we're going to have a really good, robust conversation and discussion about that. But I will say, for this piece of it, I, and I expressed that the other evening, that I do have the, of the mind to, to move forward this as well, just out of the fact that it's been sitting for a long time and not being used. And I think the four or five, the five, three to the six families that could possibly be helped out of this fund, I think it's better than not helping anyone at all to be able to, to afford to buy homes in the city. Because as Kevin pointed out, there are a very limited number of, of homes in the city currently that are affordable. And I think as the market and things in the city start to, to make a transition, I think it will become even more difficult for folks to be able to buy any properties in the city. Also, I'm of the mindset to, for this aspect of it as well, to move forward. And I think with the policy group we're working on right now, I think this could be incorporated into it. But, but I do recognize what Don and that group was, their comments on this, and why they've suggested the delay. But I do support moving forward.
All right, and I appreciate your, your position. I would, and I talked to applicant about it earlier, even before the, the meeting the other night, that, you know, there's an assumption that these funds are going to be used. If they're not used in some reasonable time, I would recommend that we put some kind of sunset in there, that these funds are made available back to the city to use other things, rather than holding them in some kind of nebulous little account that can't be had or used. So that would be my one recommendation to you. And I think, I think applicant was, was willing to do something of that nature.
Yeah. Ira? And then what? We'll give Kevin a chance to respond to that, too. Ira?
Regarding, I have no problem at all with the three-month wait. The, the issue of the timing, and this is something that I'm publicly on record, the timing would have been in 2008, when housing prices collapsed. Now, to worry about three months to time the market, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. The moment really to do it passed years ago. And that's just the way it is.
Joanna?
No.
Do you have a preference for moving forward now, or waiting?
I guess my, my question, which, and I really, I don't expect an answer, sort of rhetorical question, is why, what were the factors that led to this process taking as long as it, as it has, if what we were trying to do was just update policy? I'm not, I'm not sure, just because I may not be cognizant of all the factors of why this, you know, why there is a delay at all. That, that having been said, I, you know, I certainly take Ira's point that, that three months isn't going to matter. However, if I were asked to, to ring a bell right now, I would have to say that let's, let's move this process forward.
If I could respond to her question about why the delay, we're, one of the things that we're doing is we're trying to gather community input. And we do actually have a forum tomorrow night at Winter Hill. We have one on the 29th at George Mason High School, to gather inputs from the committee in terms of what this policy update should, should include. So that's been driving part of it. And the other thing is to not unduly burden the members of the working group that, you know, a couple of days or evenings a month is, is really what we can realistically expect from people. So that, that's all led to the timetable that we set up to have something out in May.
I just want to kind of get a better sense just of the process. We already adopted the policy, if I'm not mistaken, as far as the loan program, or have we not taken formal action on that, on that piece? I know that we had some lengthy discussion about that.
So if we could describe what was adopted in November? That was to create this type of, in the policy-
The criteria was created-
To make this type of program eligible for use of the Affordable Housing Fund. So now what's before you is a program that meets that criteria.
Whether this particular application fits the criteria that we already did, which it does. So I'm like, we already started down the road, and we've got an applicant that fits that requirement. So unless we're thinking about redoing this policy, then let's put it to use. You know, and we are going to, but what I'm getting the sense of is that people want to reexamine what happened before, which is a whole other discussion. And if, and if, I just, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think that anybody's wanting to reexamine what was done last fall. I mean, we approved moving, or do approve moving, the threshold to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. I mean, that was what was approved last fall. What, the direction that we got in firming the working group, was take a, a good, solid look at what the policy is, what the priorities should be within the city, and have council have benefited that information to establish the long-term priorities. Whether this limited program for four, six, eight, 10, whatever it may be, is that the top priority of the council? Because if it's not, then the housing fund will be decreased by about fifty percent. And if all of a sudden, something came on the radar that was a higher priority for the council, there may not be funds. And so I was not, and the group, nor the Housing Commission itself, wanted to preclude council establishing their priorities. And so by taking the vote tonight, this, you're making this, if not the single highest priority, at least one of them. And that's, and then the question is, how do you sustain this program over the long time, in a timeframe? Because this is a one-shot, and until more funds are, come back from the people who won the funds at this point in time, there are no more funds to sustain this program next year or the year after. So that's one of the things that I would, you know, ask council to consider. Is this a one-and-done program for the foreseeable future? Or is it something that we want a more sustainable program year in and year out? And, and I don't know where council comes down on that.
Does staff also have a recommendation? I want to make sure that we're hearing from staff on this as well, and why, I think you alluded to it in the beginning.
Well, I, I think the, I'll just say, my recommendation was to move forward, and I'll list the reasons for that. Housing staff, I think, is very interested in making sure that there's an effective relationship with the Housing Commission. So I'm not sure if the housing staff has, has a view on it, but I'll let Nancy Vincent speak to that. The, two, two reasons for moving ahead from my perspective are that home values are rising right now. Who knows how long that will last, but they are increasing in price right now, whereas the proceeds in the Affordable Housing Fund are getting about a point one percent rate of return. So that is working against us. The other point is, is that these funds have been available to the city for a long period of time. We've not been able to deploy them. We've tried, but, but one, one of the things is, if, if the resource is there to try to get it on the street where it can do what it is intended to do, and this program would be one tool to allow us to do that, it wouldn't be the only tool, but it would be one. And lastly, this is a little bit further afield for me to comment on, but in terms of the viability of larger projects right now, there, there was federal money as part of stimulus bills to help larger projects. That money has largely gone away, so the ability to leverage the Affordable Housing Fund for larger projects using other federal funds is not what it was as recently as a year ago. Now, how long that will last is, you know, I can't forecast that. But the ability to use these funds to, to leverage larger projects is, is diminished. So kind of a micro-program that is, that makes it accessible to homeowners is feasible, and, and can deploy this for the benefit of the community. Those are the reasons behind my recommendation.
Nancy, did you also have thoughts about this?
I'm sorry.
Nancy, if you want to share your thoughts as well?
I, I absolutely do not want to usurp the authority of the Housing Commission and would respect the recommendation that they give. Looking at the application, irrespective of, of the desires of the Housing Commission, I would, would recommend that, that the council move forward with this project. I think now is a, is a good time to move forward with the first-time homebuyer's program. Three months from now is well into the home-buying season, which really begins in the end of this month. So not only are we talking about housing prices and interest prices, we're also talking about the time of year when families are looking for, for new homes. And if we, if we wait reasonably till the end of May, June, we will, we will have been actually at the, the tail end of not, you know, of this year's home-buying season, so to speak. So my personal recommendation would be to move forward. But, but again, I would, I would wholeheartedly support the recommendation of the Housing Commission.
And if I could chime in, I think the relationship between staff and the Housing Commission is a solid relationship.
Anything else on the side, council? So I think there's somewhat consensus moving forward. Ira, I know that you would express some interest. Did you want to wait? What was your take?
I don't really have, frankly, in terms of my, my concerns, a dog in this fight. You go either way, I'm okay. What I was basically saying, you know, to this point, in the way I see it, it doesn't make a lot of difference. The, the likelihood of this being a sustainable program in the short run, from fresh money from the city, is problematic. So it's a matter, I mean, and all the arguments, if this is the will, I'm not going to, how can I say, obstruct a decision to move forward? If it was important to the, and everybody else agreed, I would certainly support that. But I can move forward with it. The reason it's taken in parts so long is that money was tied up in the program that was going to build at first the hundred and seventy, fifty-four units, and that it was going to be for the senior housing, and it got tied up and sat there, and they were talking about using it to pay interest payments on another loan. I, you know, it's like ripping a scab off, I'll control myself, but what this has been subject to and used for, this is a major improvement, makes a lot more sense, probably should go forward sooner than later, but whatever can be worked out, I'm okay with.
Any other parting thoughts, Joanna? Lawrence? Why don't we at least calendar it for the next meeting, and I think we may get some further comments, so, especially from that meeting. I think, Don, you mentioned that it's, there's a meeting tomorrow with the public.
Yeah, the first one is tomorrow at Winter Hill, seven o'clock, I believe, right? And next, a week from then, at George Mason High School at seven o'clock. And we're also trying to get a third one in the near term, probably after the one at Mason's, so that we can do it at the school, immediately after the school day, to allow teachers, city employees to attend, to get their inputs also. So it's not something we want to drag out.
So why don't we have it calendared, at least get everything ready to go, and then we'll also get the feedback, at least from the first, from the first meeting?
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Thank you. Thanks, Nancy. Thanks, Kevin. The next item that we have is the Northern Virginia Hazardous Mitigation Plan. And I think we have a handout as well.
We do. So again, to talk about the order of these, we'll do the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a, a regional plan, and then we will go through the Emergency Operations Plan, and then talk about the Fire Code Amendments. The council did get a lot of material, and we are not planning to go through it all, line by line, tonight. But we did want to just provide you with an overview of what these plans do for us, why they exist, how we use them, and then speak to maybe just a few highlights of each one. And the request for council is that you formally adopt by resolution the Hazardous Mitigation Plan and the EOP. Both of those are required. Now, we can get comment and feedback on them, but eventually they do need to be adopted. And then lastly, on the Fire Code Amendments, the request is to move those forward on first reading, and that's an ordinance change, so it requires two readings. We have our coordinator of emergency management, Thomas Polera, and Police Chief Harry Reitzi here for the presentation tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Polera.
Good evening, council members. What you have before you is a, the Hazardous Mitigation Plan. This plan is, this plan, the Disaster Mitigation Plan of 2000 requires that all localities adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan every five years. Through the Department of Homeland Security and Virginia Department of Emergency Management, funds were allocated for this plan. Prior to 2006, each jurisdiction took this plan individually and had their own. The two, the, the plan before you is, has been brought together by, has been brought together as a cohesive package of 20 jurisdictions. Mitigation Plan states the aspirations and the specific courses of action that a community intends to follow to reduce the vulnerability and exposure to future hazards. It analysis, it does an analysis on risks present in the region, and creates a framework for reducing the damage to life, property, and the economy. By identifying the risks associated with natural disasters, actions can be taken to reduce future damages. The Hazardous Mitigation Plan is required in order for jurisdiction to be eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Funds. The emergency managers in the region discuss this plan in detail. It does not take into consideration the events that occurred last August and September. This plan was submitted prior to that to Virginia Department of Emergency Management, went through FEMA, and then filtered back. This is a concern for the regional emergency managers, and it is something that will be highlighted with the after-action reports from those events in our next plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions- I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the plan.
Tom, no council actions required on the plan right now. This is just more of an informational fraud.
Yes. On the mitigation plan. Well, resolution.
I see. I'm missing that.
Each jurisdiction is required to adopt this plan.
I have a question. Johanna? All right. And just so it's on the record, as you all know, I work for DHS, so I'm precluded from any direct discussions, involvement, et cetera, with them. So, just bear that in mind, as we're preparing documents, we'll have Vice Mayor take care of that.
Okay.
Very well. Thanks.
And I would just note, the resolution for the Hazardous Mitigation Plan does reference the federal regulations that require it. The EOP does not. We corresponded earlier today on that, and I missed that citation on the mitigation plan.
But that's my understanding, is that it's a federal requirement that we're meeting, not that we're creating something.
For the EOP, while the Hazardous Mitigation Plan focuses on specific items to mitigate and to deal with specific conditions out there, the Emergency Operations Plan defines how we respond as a city to an event. The Code of Virginia requires that each local jurisdiction to prepare and keep a local emergency operations plan, and every four years, each locality will conduct a comprehensive review of the plan to ensure that it remains current, and the revised plan shall be finally adopted by the local governing body. This plan before you has three major changes compared to our previous plan. One, it incorporates the reorganization of the city departments, which occurred. The second thing is, it follows the national and state framework for the emergency support functions throughout the plan, where before we were not quite in line, we are now in line. Third, it delegates support functions to include all city departments, all city personnel, and their assigned area of expertise. The plan requires all city employees to be familiar with their specific roles and responsibilities during an incident or potential threat to the city, and the document acts as a framework for establishing a philosophy of emergency preparedness for day-to-day activities. Be happy to entertain any questions on the plan.
You may have been in the room when I referenced that I was impressed that we received a 277-page document, and I'd hoped that we were not going to be quizzed at any particular time. You know, I'm impressed with the scope of these preparations, these documents, but I had, I just had a practical question. I just pick agricultural natural resources, emergency support function number 11, to assure food security in the event of an accidental or deliberate action that threatens food security and safety. You can make up a scenario of what that might be, somebody doing something in cafeteria, okay? What is the procedure should the city be found negligent, that those departments that were required to do act and respond didn't? Is this then, does this, is the city exposed? Are we liable, or does this mean we just don't get, you know, FEMA support, or what's the consequence of failure on this, say, on number 11?
Part of this, and I may not be answering your question specifically, but generally speaking, this is a preparedness document. It requires all departments to be focused on their specific tasks. In doing so, we're also required to do drills on these tasks so that they are aware of what needs to be done. I think, to answer your question, as long as there is a good intent on performing, whether that be with department personnel, excuse me, or have contingency plans in place in areas where there might be shortages, I think we are acting in good faith to what the letter of the law is.
And I would just also say, where we would be found negligent is if we weren't doing this type of planning. But I think it is useful for us to think of this, is when we look at these ESFs, and the department directors that will be signing this plan, that they've read them, they're aware of them, and these are things that we've had a chance to review and comment on, to make sure that we can do the things that we say we can do. That this is what we're saying we're willing to hold ourselves accountable to. Now, we need to drill it, we need to practice it, we need to make sure that it's a living document, but that is the intent, as a planning exercise.
And I did, I wanted to respond, I did, in a lighthearted way, take on, you know, security issue number 11. But I am very mindful that the city has been tested. You know, I mean, the snow two years ago, you know, a lot of people could have lost their lives. I mean, there were emergency situations where people did not have power, did not have electricity. I was aware only then that, you know, the city had safe shelters, you know, the community center being one of them. And there may honestly have been an opportunity for citizens to be rounded up and taken to shelter. So, I, you know, we're being a little lighthearted here, but it is absolutely appropriate that the city engage in this sort of thing. And frankly, the flooding could have taken us in a different direction as well. So, in the last two years, we've experienced, you know, enough real-life situations that I'm actually very pleased that we have documents such as these.
I did have sort of one question, and that was, and I really think these are really important documents to have. For me, one of the central pieces is the succession of authorities, you know, and that could be because somebody's not available, or somebody's injured and can't fulfill their functions, but I have to say, it did sort of strike me, it was a bit odd that we've got the building official, city council, city attorney, and the city manager in that order. Is that a particular area of responsibility?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what page are we on?
I'm on page 26 or 27.
Just going down, these are in alphabetized order, as far as the function of the building official. The function of the building official to the right would be who is in charge, that would be the building official. Second in charge as building official would be the plans reviewer or inspector.
Got it. So, it's going across now?
Correct. So, we can say that the function is the left-hand column, and the people responsible are the right-hand column.
Okay. Do we have an order that sort of goes to succession as far as operational responsibilities?
This will come further in another document in our COOP plan, our Continuity of Operations Plan. That would go into specifics as far as contact, information at every position.
Got it. Okay. So, this was more of per-function?
This is an overall per-function.
Not the other succession based on continuing of operations?
Correct.
Are we going to get that at some point?
That is the next document to be worked on.
Okay, great. That explains why I was like, whoa, Wyatt got himself out of this.
Yeah, the building official is very powerful.
The building official is the key. Yeah, I was just like, wow, how did we get to that? And let's have the lawyers run things. I'm like, usually when I read these things, they want to get rid of all the lawyers. That makes a lot more sense. Thank you for clarifying.
Certainly.
Other questions on this? And thanks again. I think these are really important, so thanks for bringing this forward. And then I stand by the other comments about my involvement with DHS or federal entities when it comes to this. And that's, I can't be a fault. So, all right. We are on to the next item. I think we are on to the Fire Code Amendment.
Yes, next is the Fire Prevention Code. Last year at this time, when council decided to create the Office of the Fire Marshal, we also created a fire code at that time. At that time, we adopted, with some changes, the Arlington County Fire Code, as well as establishing the Office of the Fire Marshal for the City of Falls Church. In that timeframe, the city, the state, the Commonwealth of Virginia adopted the 2009 version of the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code. By adopting that code, that changes the city code, and it updates our list of amendments to that code. So, what this ordinance in front of you does is, it's there to amend Section 1819 to adopt the 2009 Virginia statewide fire prevention code, where previously, last year, it was the 2006 statewide fire prevention code of the Commonwealth. All future additions of the statewide fire prevention code, promulgated by the Virginia Board of Housing and Community Development, are automatically adopted and incorporated into this code. This code, the statewide fire prevention code is adopted every three years, so we would be looking in 2015 at the next process, and if there are significant changes in that process, that's when we would have to make amendments to that one. I will, I do want to call your attention to line item 161, which is the Local Board of Fire Prevention Code Appeals. And just, I'd like to read that section. "Any person or entity cited for violations when aggrieved by a decision or interpretation of the fire marshal made under provisions of either the City of Falls Church Fire Prevention Code or the Virginia statewide fire prevention code may appeal to the Local Board of Appeals upon the grounds of the manner set forth in the code." The City of Falls Church Local Building, the City of Falls Church Local Board of Building Code Appeals will serve under this provision and be established as the Local Board of Building and Fire Prevention Code Appeals. This is a local board that we have currently that if there are any issues regarding the building code under the building official, those items are brought before that board. What this board would then do is also, instead of having a separate board, for a fire code, the fire code would be incorporated into that board as well, if there are any appeals process that would need to be taken care of. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I've had discussions with the building official on this, and he's in complete agreement.
And the city council appoints that board.
Is there, are there regulations in here, and forgive me if I didn't see them?
It may be.
Around 199, but recommendations regarding indoor fireplaces or wood-burning stoves in the city, in single-family homes?
We do not, this does not address that. The Fire Prevention Code, the easiest way to think about this is, the Fire Prevention Code is a building maintenance code. For new structures going in, that is, that would be the construction code, which is under the building official, would be under that.
Tom, that actually relates to a question that I had. So, this only affects new or also existing?
The Fire Prevention Code is for all existing structures.
So, this would basically make changes to the existing fire code for existing structures?
For existing structures, correct.
So, let me jump into the question that I have, and please don't take this the wrong way, but I fully support what we try to do with public safety and fire prevention. I think it's extremely important, but I also think at the same time, some of the improvements are going to have costs associated with them. I think for council, at least for my purposes, it's going to be important to know what those costs are, who it could potentially affect. So, when we do naturally get questions about it, we can kind of explain it and make the cause of why it's important. So, from this document, it's not clear of what some of those are.
The Fire Prevention Code does not, the one thing that the Fire Prevention Code doesn't do is, the reason why it's a maintenance code, it does not bear undue costs on businesses, for instance. It will not, for instance, if it's, if you have a mom-and-pop shop that may require today a fire alarm system in it, this Fire Prevention Code does not mandate that they put a fire prevention, or a fire alarm system in. It only deals with items such as exit signs. It will deal with items that are not cost-prohibitive from a fire prevention standpoint. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
I think so. So, it doesn't get into, you know, while I may think having, say, sprinkler systems in some housing types that we don't currently, because they were built before they were changed. This wouldn't mandate?
This would not mandate that.
So, I mean, I could see the argument, positive step.
Correct. That would not mandate, of course, doing inspections, we could make recommendations, but it is not a requirement of the code, where new structures coming in would have to meet the guidelines of the construction code, which also has a fire prevention piece in it.
Got it. Just looking at one item, because we spent so much time, for example, talking at the chamber about signs, and that's sort of where my questions are going. I know that there's at least a sign addition, and I can't tell if this is similar to what we currently have, or whether the signs are changing in size.
Are we talking the fire lane signs?
Yes. This is on line 269 through 302.
This, the reason why this is in there is, the statewide fire prevention code does not specify dimensions of signs, where this, all this is doing is, it's specifying what those dimensions are to a more specific level. This has not changed at all from previous codes, fire prevention codes. These fire lane signs are the same size as they were in the past. It's just sometimes the state will not put specific specifications in the code, only because the code is dealing with also everything from urban areas to rural areas. So, that's why we have these amendments, to put certain specifics in there.
Okay. But this isn't going to be a situation where we're going to be requiring businesses or condominiums or townhouses to redo their signs?
No, no. In the opinion of the fire official, if those signs are completely faded out, they would then be required to put them in. For new structures going in, as the fire official, I'm also in the plans review process, so where we see that there's a need for fire lanes, those are then recommended.
Great. And Tom, I think this is really good. And, you know, before we take action, if there's particular items where you think it's going to require something new to be done with costs associated with it, you know, I don't have an issue with that. I just want to be aware of it, so if we get comments and questions from our business community, from the chamber, from community associations, from condos, we can just address them appropriately and discuss it with them. And it's just something that we, us who are not deep into this every day, I think would be helpful, just so we're aware and are able to discuss it with our constituents.
Certainly.
This was the type of sign that we wanted to keep uniform, so that all of these, these signs are also approved. So, when someone builds a location that requires a fire, a no-parking fire lane, the sign that they put up is approved by Public Safety for that, so that they're all uniform. And like you say, Mayor, some signs aren't egregiously large and expensive and things like that.
Other questions, John? Okay. So, and this requires two readings. Is this an ordinance change? So, let's, I think this is, are you guys ready, from staff's perspective, to put this forward then for Monday?
Yes.
Counsel, you guys get with it?
Okay.
So, if we can just kind of get some feedback based on what we talked about, Tom, just so we can?
There's one area I'll bring to your attention. There's one area I'll bring to your attention regarding that, line 466. And this might, this might be the only area that may concern you a little bit regarding the cost factor. However, they're making this change as well in the construction code. Existing buildings where the fire department connection is, the fire department stamp pipe, there should be a sign, the state code requires a sign above that connection that says FDC, and it's got a red background with white lettering. What we're also requiring now on new buildings is a strobe light above that sign, non-audible strobe light, so that when the fire department, an alarm comes in for that building, especially at nighttime, when the fire department responds, they look for that strobe light, and they know that's where that sprinkler connection is. It's something that's new, not many other jurisdictions are doing that. We've put that in this code to deal with mainly upgrades, so this verbiage will be the same as what will be in the construction code. When the building official determines that there's a significant upgrade to a building's fire alarm system, they need to upgrade it completely, this would then be entered in as far as having a strobe light above the fire department connection. And again, we don't see this too often, we don't have that many buildings in the city with fire department connections or considered high-rise, however, that number is beginning to grow.
Great. So Tom, if there's anything else, is your, you know, before now on Monday, if you can just put it in the staff report, but I think this is very good.
Sure.
All right. Anything else, Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have, we're on to council comments and schedule, and then we'll go to the closed session after that. Counsel, any comments on the schedule coming up? Anybody going to be out?
There's a meeting tomorrow. There's a meeting tomorrow. The liaison board, what room is that in? Wyatt?
That's in the school board offices, the conference room.
That's the liaison council meeting.
That's right.
Thank you.
And Wyatt, that's from 8:00 to 9:00?
That's correct.
Anything else? Ira, are you going to, you have some meetings you're going to be unavailable for. Do you have the dates, so we can start?
I'm finalizing the calendar now.
Okay, great.
But it looks like, at the moment, it's March 19th for then two, actually, two weeks.
Okay. And if you can, once those are finalized, if you can just shoot...
Will do, thanks.
Shoot us a note. Thank you. Joanna, anything for me?
I didn't have a change on the schedule, but I wanted to bring something to council's attention. As part of the work I was doing with the GOBA-OPS committee, one of the things I started looking at is the council request documentation. And I've been talking with Kathy about this, and I'm not entirely sure how to frame this, but basically, the concern is this, that we need to come up with a system which can be regularly reviewed by council, whether it's a, you know, Google Doc, or one of, what is the name of that thing, John?
Google Doc.
That's why I didn't want to say it.
Pardon?
That's why I didn't want to say it. This software that John uses, because at present, the list of council requests is both outdated and overwhelming. It's at least four pages long. Some of these requests perhaps have been fulfilled, some council may have forgotten they even asked, and it just becomes an onerous process. And so by having, by having some sort of a document which then allows historical data to be stored, that is, this council request came in, it was answered, and so there's a historical record, yes, this is the trail, but also that gives council the opportunity to look on a regular basis, in real time, at the list of requests. I mean, the last one I have here is 57. There are 57 requests that are outstanding, that allows council perhaps to review and say, you know, maybe I really didn't need the answer to that, or maybe this is less priority, or maybe this continues to be a priority, but there's some sort of interactive engagement. And so I just want to bring that to council's attention, and I've been talking to Kathy about it, we've been talking about the process, but I think there's also sort of a philosophical element, too, in how council wants to engage and task staff. So just wanting council to know that I've been talking about it and working with Kathy, and hope to have something that's useful.
Ms. Berry, I just finished now, finished, and I'm working on it all right. Just now finished cleaning up the list. Your question? I just finished cleaning up the list for you, Ms. Berry, and I can tell you that in the outstanding column, we're down to 30. Excellent. And in the completed column, we're looking at 39.
Great.
Very good. Very good.
And I think from that, then we can scrub some more, too. Ira?
Having been at the receiving end, when I was still full-time working and getting requests from the board of directors, I have to strongly second what Ms. Berry has said. There's a difference between, wouldn't it be nice to know, and I got to have it, it's essential for making a decision, and also, I'd be very candid with you, whenever I hear, we need out-of-the-box thinking. What that really means is, I'm taking this monkey off of my back and going to put it on your back. I did what I had to do, I told you to figure out how to solve this unsolvable problem. That is a bad, if you're thinking of saying that, think twice, because that's all that that means.
Let the minutes reflect.
No, and I think when we devised this list, the purpose was to make sure that we were using staff resources and kind of managing it, and everybody had transparency to what was being asked, so we could prioritize. So I think, unfortunately, with, there is a bit of work that goes into making the list work, so I think it's actually a good thing that we're dusting it off and refreshing it and cleaning it up, so, and taking a look at it and having a discussion about what stays and what goes away off the list, so. And I think it would be helpful if staff can think a way, as we move forward, of making sure things come off that list.
Oh, sure.
Well, let me put it this way.
That's an effort they like to do.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just going to be important for staff, once they complete it, to just say, I completed it. And I don't know whether we have a shared drive that senior staff have access to, so there's one document, and they can just check a box that says, done, finito. So I think council's responsibility is to kind of manage the workload, but we also are going to need staff help to say, we completed it, so the list doesn't get old.
57. Yep, that's it.
Okay. All right. And we are not going to be conducting any business when we come out, is that right, John? Wyatt, we're not, nothing further from you? Okay. Upon a motion made by council member...
Berry.
And seconded by council member...
Caitlin.
I was going to say Webb.
Just to break through.
I was going to say Webb.
I'll take you back to the...
And passed by a voice vote, a city council went into closed session pursuant to, one, section 2.2-371183 of the Code of Virginia, per the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or for the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And two, section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, with such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the public body. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Oh my God, I'm getting tired. And three, section 2.2-3711A29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including review of bidders, offerors, the discussion of the terms of such scope of contract, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, that to which the water litigation. Mayor, yes, Vice Mayor Snyder's absent. Councilmember Berry?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner's absent. Councilmember Caitlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pepe's absent.
I got your list again.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Okay, we are going out at 9:15.
9:15.